Call meeting to order, please stand and join us on the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to apply to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That over here, there we go. Can I get an approval of the minutes of meeting held on October 9th, please?
So moved, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Any persons wishing to address the board, Bev? Nope, thank you. I get an approval of the agenda, please. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Okay, good news report. Deanne.
Good evening. I was planning to have something special for you this evening, but after 35 minutes of working with technology, I'm going to have to have you use your imagination for a little bit. For this evening's good news report, we wanted to bring you a live picture from the CTE Academy where they are hosting an open house and career fair, which started at 4 o'clock this afternoon and goes until 7:00 PM this evening. And we worked with our media arts program teacher and also our district cable access. And today at noon, it was working just fine. Right now, I'm getting the dialing and nothing is coming in. So unfortunately, we're not going to be able to bring you that picture. But my thought was in creating the good news report and showing you this is because there are literally hundreds of people out there right now who are checking out the CTE Academy in terms of what it can offer for academics, but also checking out vendors and a variety of businesses in our community that are looking for students to get into their trade or into their line of work and encouraging them to participate through the classes at CTE and then also consider a career. So the students are doing tours of our facility out there. They are seeing industry-grade lab equipment that we have available and they're having some exciting chats with the adults who are leading those classes. Our welding department is having a raffle of some student-constructed fire pits. So if you need a fire pit, might be a great way to get one. Our flight simulators and drones from the aviation program are on display. We also are doing tours of the homes that are being constructed by our Carpentry 1 and 2 students in partnership with Habitat for Humanity and of course, the city of Sioux Falls. Our biomedical students, as well as our AP Biology students, are learning or getting their hands dirty and showing other kids what they can do in those programs as well. Also appetizers are being served. So if nothing else, the food should entice you to go out. And we invite our public as well, anyone who may be watching and wonders what goes on out of the CTE Academy tonight would be a great opportunity to do that and see workforce development in action, essentially. This, again, the event runs until 7 o'clock. It's at the Career and Technical Education Academy. The address for that is 4700 West Career Circle. And from I-29, you go west on Madison Avenue and north on Terry Avenue. It is located just south of Southeast Technical Institute campus. So we encourage folks, although we can't entice you with that live video, we had the teacher Nathan Hoffman, as well as Jeff Little from our Media Equipment Specialist, working on this. And I can assure you, today at noon, it was working. So, but nonetheless, lots of students, lots of opportunities, and a good connection for our community to see those programs in action.
Great. Thanks, Deanne.
Thank you.
Actually, I haven't been out there in a while, so I'll have to go out, not tonight, but another time.
Orders.
What?
Orders.
We know where Todd's going afterwards. All right. Thank you very much. Any conflicts of interest? Seeing none. Can I get an approval of the consent agenda, please?
So moved, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. All right, can I get a, we've got supplemental consent agenda claims to Sanford, items A1 through 3. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved, second.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. All right, on to the reports of the superintendent.
Okay, well, our first report tonight, or actually, our first report tonight is a public hearing, request the waiver from the South Dakota Department of Education for a student internship program. We'll have presenting this report tonight, Dr. Teresa Boyson from Curriculum Services.
Good evening. Tonight, the purpose of this report is to hold a public hearing seeking approval to submit a waiver through the South Dakota Department of Education to allow students to replace up to two high school credits for a successful completion of internship experience. The Sioux Falls District is applying for a waiver from the South Dakota Department of Education for high school students to replace up to two credits towards graduation requirements with an internship apprenticeship experience. Throughout that experience, students will have opportunities to develop soft skills that are critical to employers and spend time with employers in the field of their interest. The internship apprenticeship experience will prepare them for post-secondary technical training, work, and citizenship to make a significant difference in their school experience. The Sioux Falls District believes every student deserves a course of study that allows him or her to learn in deep, meaningful ways. The internship apprenticeship program will match students' interests and aptitudes to provide an authentic educational experience. If the state of South Dakota grants the district's request for the waiver to replace high school credits with an internship apprenticeship experience, it would be effective through July 1st, 2023. Questions?
Any questions? All right, I, nope. Okay.
I just think this is wonderful that we're looking at adding this additional ability for students to receive credit and something that might help them further where they're going to go in their lives. And thank you for putting the work in, and help the team for doing this for our students.
Collaborative effort with lots of people and excitement from the students that being able to go out into the field of their interest in the community. So now we look for the community to uplift our students and support them in this adventure.
I acknowledge the public hearing for the high school students to replace graduation requirements with an internship apprenticeship experience and direct administration to pursue the waiver from the Department of Ed.
Now we open this up to any public comments for the hearing portion of this report. Will you approach the podium, Pam?
I'll never learn to shut my mouth. My clarifying question, will they be able to replace any two courses?
Yes, the waiver, it's an open waiver, so they can replace any course of study that they so choose. Up to two credits.
Any other comments? All right, so we close the hearing?
We are closing the hearing. And I don't know that we actually need to vote, do we?
We just closed the hearing? Okay. All right, thank you, Teresa, for the report. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Okay, our next report is the post-secondary enrollment report, post-secondary enrollment and graduation report.
We still need to vote. Well, that's what I was asking.
To acknowledge. To acknowledge. Who needs to have a vote to acknowledge?
That's what I was asking. Thank you. Can I get a motion to acknowledge the report, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
No, I would like to just further comment that the, we talk about the multiple pathways, and this is another, another way that we offer that to the students in our district. The, the whole idea of internships has been obviously talked about in our district at Southeast Tech statewide as something that is being encouraged to make sure that when, when our students graduate, they are either job-ready or ready to move on to whatever post-secondary education they choose. And this, to me, is a, is a huge step in, in us being able to prepare our kids appropriately as they, as they leave high school. So I, I very heartily endorse the, the concept. Thank you.
All right. You have a motion and a second. Can I get all those in favor signify by saying aye, please?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Okay.
Okay, now, our next report will be the post-secondary records of enrollment and graduation report, also brought to you by Dr. Boyson.
Good evening. Our post-secondary enrollment and graduation report is the district priority area student outcomes, where we look at providing rigorous, effective, and engaging curriculum and instruction for all students to emphasize growth and reduce the achievement gap with a special focus on the, all the areas with literacy, time on task, differentiated instruction, multiple pathways, equitable access, college readiness, and holding all schools to high expectations. We turn to the Bureau of Labor and Statistics to find our results, and then from the National Clearing House also. But the Bureau of Labor and Statistics projects by 2000, 22, 65% of all jobs will require post-secondary education. The fastest-growing fields will be the science, technology, engineering, and math, healthcare professions, healthcare support, community service, and these occupations require high levels of post-secondary education. Employers will be looking for cognitive skills such as active listening, ability to communicate, and critical thinking. Most jobs securing a high school education will not be enough for quality employment. Applicants will need to have some form of post-secondary bachelor's degree or beyond, associate's degree certificate or certification in the field of their study. This first chart here shows checkpoints along the way. 1973, 91 million students with post-second, that graduated went on to post-secondary. It shows the less-than-high-school degree at 32%, all the way up to the master's degree at 7% or better. And we fast forward to 2020, where there'll be 164 students going on to post-secondary with 12% with less-than-a-high-school degree and 11% or more needing a master's or better. So the distribute, the students distributed across all those areas, it shows that there's an increase of that level, that need for a level of education from 1973 to 2020. And we get this post-secondary enrollment records. It's important that we continue to look at those, and we obtain those from the National Student Clearing House, which enables districts to access the largest provider of electronic student records exchange with representation of more than 3,600 post-secondary institutions, enrolling 98% of all students in public and private institutions. Participating in this, however, is up to the student, whether or not they want to allow their information to be posted. So while we recognize these numbers are out here, that students do have the right to have their data blocked and not participate. So for the information that we have are of our students that choose to participate. This next chart shows the top 10 universities in the state of South Dakota and around the region that participate with SDSU at almost 1,500 students, two school en mines of 135, so the, and everything in between there. This, and then chart C shows the percent of 2016 district graduates enrolled in post-secondary institution, the fall immediately following. So that's at 57% of those students. Looking at the eight-year trend from 2009 to 2016, the percent of district graduates with initial enrollment have remained steady over the past three years at 57%. And we have a slight increase in the students that enrolled in that two-year program last year, up by 1%. Chart D illustrates district graduates that continue to pursue their post-secondary enrollments over time due to delayed entrance. So we look at the, the blue line, the bottom line, those are the students that go into, right away in the fall, right after high school. And that top line is those students anytime within the first two years after high school. So we gain about 8% over the last three years from that initial to anytime in that first two years. Eight, eight percent average. And chart E shows a post-secondary enrollment and students' progression towards graduation. It gives us a good look over time at our students as a transition through the, the university experience and those that we continue to enroll. So in 2011, 2012, we had 66% of our students new to that college experience. The next year, we had, we gained an additional 6% of students that were new to college. The 2013, 2014, so two years later, we had 4%, so 1.5% returned that maybe had left after the first year, but gained additional 2.5%. 2014, 15, 3% growth there. We had some students that left, but then it gained some new students. And then that last year, 2015, 2016, 3.7% gained students, returning students and gaining new students. So our district graduates continue to pursue enrollment in post-secondary institutions over time due to delayed entrance. A 65% overall average at any time during the first two years after high school from 2011 to 2015. We recognize most jobs require applicants to have post-secondary education and training beyond high school. Employers will continue to look for cognitive skills such as active listening, ability to communicate, and critical thinking that make post-secondary education a necessary requirement. Therefore, we will continue to retrieve this data, analyze it, and report it to our constituents.
Questions? What would be the reason that they wouldn't be in the clearinghouse or the NSC records?
If, if I choose, it's just like in our district, if I don't want my child's information to be released out, or so as a student, I choose not to release it to the clearinghouse, I can do that.
I was reading, it was either the Argus or Wall Street this morning. I think it lists the top 10 states and the bottom 10 states in the country of post-secondary education. If the Sioux Falls was a state, we would be in the top 10. So that's a credit to our school district, I think. In South Dakota, wasn't in the bottom 10, so that's good news. But thank you, and this information's helpful, and we just need to keep making sure we're meeting all the kids' needs to get to that level.
Yeah, thank you.
I think one of the things, too, as you look at people delaying, sometimes people might graduate, and then as they start on a new career, they find that their new employer offers a tuition reimbursement that maybe makes it able for them to go back and get that specified degree, too. So I think that's encouraging, and hopefully there are more as we look at internships and, and relationships built with other companies within Sioux Falls. Hopefully, there are more people that offer that so that they can retain a, a great employee, but also train them at the same time. And I think it's, you know, it's a win-win type of a thing, too. But I know there's lots of places in Sioux Falls that do that tuition reimbursement, which makes a huge difference to students, too.
Any other questions?
Ask that you acknowledge the report.
Can I get a motion in a second, please?
So moved, second.
All right, any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign? Okay.
Our next report is an important report for a lot of reasons at this time of year. It's the 2017 Fall Enrollment Report, brought to us from Information and Technology Services and Michael Christopherson.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to provide the student numbers for the Fall Enrollment Report. The numbers for the K-12 Fall Enrollment Report are based on the student FTE calculation for the fall funding date, which is the last Friday in September. These numbers were generated based on enrollments as of Friday, September 29th. We continue to see growth in enrollment numbers this year as a district. First, I'd like to take a look at the K through 5th grade. We have increased by 32 students for a total of 11,797 students, which is a 0.27% increase from last year at the same time. In the middle schools, we are up 3.18% compared to this time last year with an additional 171 students, giving us a total of 5,381 students in 6th through 8th grade. Finally, the high school enrollment took an increase of 99 students for a total of 6,779 students and a 1.46% increase. Therefore, our initial K-12 enrollment numbers as of funding Friday, September 29th, was 23,957 students, which is up 1.26% over last year. The sum of the total of early childhood, early child head start in K-12 is 25,004 students. Turning to the line graph here, the following line graph is a quick visual representation of just our initial K-12 total enrollment from the past five years. The percentage you see on the graph are based on an increased percentage over the previous year's numbers. As you can see, we continue steady growth as a district between 1 and 2%. Going a little farther back in history, we can see that we have 3,902 more students than we did 10 years ago, and 5,654 more students than 20 years ago. So in 20 years, we have gained more students than the total enrollment at any other South Dakota school besides Sioux Falls and Rapid City. Initial open enrollment number, numbers indicate a total of 1,067 students open and enrolling into the district, while only 376 students that open enroll out of the district. This is a 2.84 to 1 ratio. So for every 2.84 students we have coming in, we have one leaving. So I'm not going to try and steal Deanne's thunder, because she's going to give you the demographics report here, but just briefly, looking at ethnic diversity within the Sioux Falls School District. We continue to see ethnic diversity change in all grade levels. District-wide, we have seen the following shifts in these ethnic groups. The percentage of Asian students held constant over the last year at 3.5%. The percentage of Black students has increased from 11.3% to 11.9%. Percentage of Hispanic students are down from 10.3% to 11%. Native American percentage is slightly down from 4.4% to 4.3%. Student percentage of multiracial ethnicity is slightly up from 5.1% to 5.5%, while Pacific Islander students have remained the same at 0.1%. Finally, the percentage of the white ethnicity students has also decreased percentage-wise with a 1.6% decrease from 65.3% to 63.7%. Taking a historical look at ethnicity in the Sioux Falls School District, we can compare back as far as 1991 and see the various changes that encompass our ethnicity diversity of the district. With these changes come great opportunities to understand perspectives of children from different backgrounds and learn to function in a multicultural, multi-ethnic environment. As Sioux Falls public schools becomes more diverse, we continue to strategically plan for the most effective ways of accomplishing our mission to educate and prepare each student to succeed in a changing world. I would ask the board to acknowledge the Fall Student Enrollment Report and welcome any questions that you may have.
With the open enrollment, do we have further breakdowns, like high school versus maybe specialized schools versus maybe students on special needs plans, or what?
Sure. Not at this time. Basically, the state, this is really initial data that the state's getting to us. But our hope is that we can actually break down and geographically map those students for you, but also break it down by grade level.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
The 376 students who open enroll out, does that just take into consideration surrounding towns, or does that also include private schools in Sioux Falls?
No, that would just be other schools around, not private schools. Just, yep. So if they're within our district boundaries and go to a private school, that's not in this number. Good question.
Any other questions?
Certainly a lot of growth, which I think as we continue our conversations about facilities, planning, we continue to have numbers that show us year over year that we're not slowing down in our numbers of students. And so that makes those conversations more timely and more relevant, I think, as we, you know, kind of ramp up to be more serious about those in the next couple of months. So it's nice to see the facts and the, the details and the, the numbers to have a good feeling about those decisions.
Can I get a motion in a second to approve the K-12 Fall Enrollment Report, please?
So moved, second.
All right, any discussion? All right, great report. Thank you. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign? Okay.
Okay, our next report, as you've already stated, is the District Demographic Report. Here to give us that, report from Community Relations is Deanne Conrad.
And there it is. Just because I can't let it go. Wouldn't you know, we finally got that up just about as I was sitting down. It's a little dark to see here, and I think everybody just, now it stopped working. As I put it there, of course it would. But it's a nice crowd. Shooting toward the window, it's hard to get all of the detail in. Oh, they're moving again. But it's a nice crowd of students and parents and, and community leaders as well. So we're proud of that. And if I take it off of here, it will start working again, I'm sure.
You can just leave it there if you want. We can watch it while you give your report.
So this is perhaps my favorite report of the year. The District Demographic Report is really our story in the Sioux Falls School District. And I, I tell people often, if we're not telling our story, someone else is. So we might as well... So, we might as well be the ones telling our story with the information that is accurate and as we see on a daily basis. As you know, our mission is to educate and prepare each student to succeed in a changing world. Our vision is a bit longer than that, but essentially, we are committed to workforce, development of students, student performance. We are committed to their social, emotional needs, all parts of the child, in creating that educational environment that is positive for them and allows them to reach their fullest potential. As you just heard from Michael Christopherson, our enrollment continues to rise at a surplus of 302 students. We are grateful for that continued growth, as we know that challenges arise in other districts when there is decreasing enrollment. In a 10-year span here, you can see that we've gained approximately 4,000 students. So, that's great to see. We've always keeping our sights on that historic information and watching those trends as they continue. Michael also gave you a breakdown of student diversity. I've shown it to you here as well. Our white population last year was 65%. This year, 63.7, so a representation of 1.3% change over last year. That is in line with what we've seen for the last several years, five to 10 years, is typically a 1% to 2% shift in our diversity. And so, our diverse groups make up 36.3%, and we believe they provide a richer learning experience for everyone. Continuing on with our student demographics, taking a snapshot in time, our English language learners, 2,289, with a total of 90 languages spoken by the children in our schools and among their families. This is the first time we've seen that number get into 90. It will bounce around consistently between 70, and I believe the highest I've seen it is 82. And this number, on the date that we pulled this data, at 90. So, as we learn about different dialects of, you know, languages spoken and such, we're constantly learning new things about languages that are coming to us for the very first time, and then all of a sudden, we'll find something else out about the family and realize, oh, well, this family doesn't necessarily speak that language, they speak a different dialect of it. So, we're constantly in the learning mode as well. We are grateful to be able to serve 3,925 students who have special needs. That number is representative of our birth to 21, the total number of students that we serve. When you look at the K-12 enrollment in special education, and this is the number that you consistently have seen in this report over time, it's 3,517 K-12, and that is 14.7% of our student enrollment. Again, that number, 14.7%, is very consistent with what we've seen over years past. The special education population, if it were a school district by itself, it would be the sixth-largest in South Dakota, behind our own school district, Rapid City, Aberdeen, Harrisburg, Watertown, and then the population of Sioux Falls, special education students. We've seen that bounce between the fifth and sixth-largest, and I think with Harrisburg's increase, that number has pushed us to sixth this year. We have 1,705 students with 504 plans, and we continue to work with their needs and make sure that those needs are met. Our staff demographics, a little over 3,300 staff make up the Sioux Falls School District. 1,820 of them are teachers, so not quite half, and 65% of those teachers have a master's degree or beyond, and 1,274 are classified staff. I guess the 1,820 is, do my math here, is a little more than half. This is a slide that typically captures a lot of attention. What have our free and reduced numbers done in the last couple of years? You can see a pretty steady pace at which we've been. There's a few adjustments here and there over the last three years, but our elementary population, there are 49.3% of them who qualify for free and reduced meals. We know that some families may for, or may not, for whatever reason, fill out the required paperwork, but we do know that 49.3% of them have filled that out. We believe that's a representation that is probably more likely to also represent the middle and high school numbers as well. But for whatever reason, open lunch at the high school or what have you, we may not have people filling out the required paperwork. That information, excuse me, had to be, they were allowed to use last year's status for free and reduced lunch up until a few weeks ago, and then the new paperwork was required. So, certainly, we'd love that paperwork on the first day of school, but we do have a significant grace period where students can take last year's status until they get the new paperwork turned in. So, that's a huge effort on the part of our child nutrition staff to get that paperwork processed. We do have a number of schools also that qualify for the community eligibility program, which is, their poverty level indicates that 100% of the children in that building can receive the free meals. One part of our success that we're very proud of, of course, is our ACT scores. You saw this report a few months ago. We are 22.9 on our ACT score, when South Dakota is 21, and the national average is 21 as well. So, our students continue to do well in our tests. Also noted in a previous report, a graduation rate, and very happy to report the increase of 3.3% for a four-year cohort graduation rate of 83.79% and a completion rate of 87.49%. The story, I think, of the Sioux Falls School District has been and continues to be that we do not give up on students. If they are back with us and come back to earn that high school diploma, we will be there to provide that education to them and help them any way possible. Our advanced placement outcomes, that's receiving a score of three or higher on the advanced placement tests. This information was reported previously, 71.6% receive a three or higher in Sioux Falls, where South Dakota's average is 70% and the nation's average is 60. 51% of all school district seniors were enrolled in at least one AP course, indicating that we are constantly encouraging children to take rigorous coursework, something that can challenge their academic growth, and we can support them along the way. And then, 52% of all exams taken in South Dakota are taken by students enrolled in the Sioux Falls School District. So, again, our story can be told by our focus in the strategic plan and the four areas that we have outlined as critical needs, student outcomes, always reaching for the next thing that's going to help students achieve at their greatest potential, creating a safe and welcoming school climate and culture, where everyone, no matter your diversity, no matter your needs, is accepted and appreciated. Also, hiring and maintaining district staff that is the highest, of the highest quality, and also engaging our community in conversations about what might need to be done in the future, what we do well, what we can do better at. And so, this is a story of the Sioux Falls School District, and this PowerPoint is often used in civic group meetings, when our staff is asked to come out and present information about the Sioux Falls School District. So, connected here in the 2017 District Demographic Report, and I'd ask that you acknowledge this report.
Thanks, Deanne. Any questions for Deanne?
So, how many students graduated more this year than last year?
Dr. Maher, I believe that number is 52.
Well, let me see if I understand your question correctly. So, if our percentage last year, our graduation rate last year was the same this year, how many students would not have the degree?
Yes.
The diploma?
Yep.
57.6.
That's just awesome.
Not exactly sure how the .6 comes in there, but it's 57.6.
You know, as our district grows, I'm not just excited about seeing that, but the fact that we've got 51% of our students taking AP, this is just great news.
Any other questions? All right, can I get a motion in a second, please, to accept the 2017 District Report?
He moved already, I'll second.
All right, any discussion?
It's, I mean, it's great news. We, as we look at, I mean, I look back 10 years to when I went on the board, and the change in the demographics is significant. And we work hard every day to meet the needs of those families that move here, and we get blessed with educating their students, their kids. That's great. The special education population, you know, I wouldn't do justice to a demographics report if I didn't say that special ed is a gift to every school that we have in the Sioux Falls School District. I mean, we have a great challenge with the growth, and, you know, the community conversations that we are just beginning to start, and look at, what are we going to need for facilities? What are we going to need to be able to do the very best job that we can do to educate every child that comes to the Sioux Falls Public Schools? The buildings are necessary to do that, but the programs and the diversity that we have is really the story that we have to tell. So, it's good stuff.
And the staff that are there to educate them.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, all right. No further discussion? Can I get a motion in a second, please? We already have that. Sorry. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? Okay.
Okay, our final report of the evening is the First Quarter Finance Report, brought to you by Business Manager Todd Beek.
Thank you, Dr. Maher. We are, as of September, end of September, we're fourth of the way through the school year, but as far as school budgeting goes, we're not very far at all. You can see in your materials, and I've just pulled up the general fund here, if you look at the revenue side, we've accounted for approximately 13.3% of our revenue through the first quarter. However, based on Mr. Christopherson's report, I can kind of narrow in on how we're going to turn out for the year, because state aid is over 85, state aid formula, which is, of course, property, combination of property taxes, and state aid is, and when you throw in the opt-out, which we know what that is, that's cool, that's about 90% of our general fund revenues. And his funded number is eight greater than what we had budgeted for. So, you can add about $45,000 to our state aid figure up there, essentially. So, on a 68, on the, I should say, on the revenue side, on a $163.5 million budget, $45,000 isn't a lot, but it's better than the opposite. So, we're glad for that. On our expenditures, we're slightly more, I think we have 14.5. 14.5% expended. We do not have the salary and benefits, and most of that, of course, is teacher salaries and benefits. That report is due to the state here at the end of October, so we'll have a much better look at how we think we're going to come in on expenditures when all that is completed, after you get through the hustle and bustle, the opening of the school district or the school year. So, we will have a much better figure for that when we get back to you on the second quarter report at the end of January, to report expenditures through December. On special ed, we're 12.8% revenue and 9.8% expenditures, I believe. Same is true on the expenditure side. We'll know a lot more about the teacher salaries when that report is done for the state. On the revenue side, that is, our state aid formula is based on the December child count from last year. So, we were pretty sure what that number was going to be when we prepared the budget last spring. So, we're pretty confident that the state aid formula, which is, of course, again, is property taxes and state aid, is going to be about right on with that. Capital outlay is the last one I'll talk about. No state aid involved there, but 98% of the revenue budget is property taxes, and those were set by you at the end of September. So, we know we're right there, we're within $100,000, we're $100,000 to the good on that is where we're going to be. So, again, and that one's a little weird, very little bit of our revenue has come in yet. See, that figure is 2.4%, but we know what it's, you know, because property taxes are, most of those are received by us in November, May, and there is no state aid involved, state aid comes in monthly. So, there's no state aid involved there. So, we've received very little of our revenue. Our expenditures, though, we do a lot of that in the summer. A lot of the Jeff Kreider's expenditures happen in the summer, they either happen in the, you know, in July and August or in June. So, he's about 50% spent. Technology expenditures, most of those happen over the summer, so the computers can be in place when the student gets back. And then debt service, a lot of that is timed in July and January. So, we're about halfway through on our expenditures, on our revenue, very little has come in, but we know it's coming in in November and December. So, with that, that's where we stand. I would just ask that you approve the first quarter financial report, or acknowledge it.
Any questions for Todd? Seeing none, can I get a motion in a second, please?
So move.
Second. Any discussion? I'd say, good work, as always, Todd. Nice to see we're on track, and...
Thank you.
Yeah.
The $49,000 is not a windfall, but I'm sure we can use it.
Sure we can figure out a way to spend that money.
Sure we will.
All right. Seeing no other comments, can I, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? All right, now we move on to policy. We've got a second reading of the Policy GCE, Staff Recruiting and Employment. We had this brought to us for first reading, and it's been out for, posted for public view, and no comments were received. And just a reminder, this policy was updated, as we do with most of our policies, is make sure that the policy matches the practice. So, I move to approve the second reading.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? Okay, anything further? Anything further? I can see nothing. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Adjourned. Thank you.